We meditate on the transcendental glory of the TT Supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven, may he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma sadgamya, tamsoma jyotirgamya, bretior mamratam gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada saktastatum krem karma samachara, sakto ha charan karma parma panothi purusha. Karma nevahisamsiddhi mastitajankha deya, lokasangreha mevapi sampashankar tum rahasim. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha navavatu, saha nobnaktu, saha viryan karva bahai, tijasvi navadita mustu, mahavidhvasa bahai. May we be protected together. May we nourish together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samniva akuti, samna hirdjaniwa, samnamastu voh manu, yethava susa hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts, may your spirits be at one that...
(phone rings)
Rajan?
Yes?
Okay. I'm sorry, we had a little technical difficulty. And please proceed with these spiritual words and leadership. Thank you.
me to read invocation for the great city of Biloxi. I shall be reading in Sanskrit from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE, then interpreted in English. Om. Pur dugahaswaha, tattvavitar varanayam, vargo devasitimaahi, dioyona prachodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the TT Supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven, may he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma sadgamya, tamsoma jyotirgamya, bretior mamratam gamya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasmada saktastatum krem karma samachara, sakto ha charan karma parma panothi purusha. Karma nevahisamsiddhi mastitajankha deya, lokasangreha mevapi sampashankar tum rahasim. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om saha navavatu, saha nobnaktu, saha viryan karva bahai, tijasvi navadita mustu, mahavidhvasa bahai. May we be protected together. May we nourish together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samniva akuti, samna hirdjaniwa, samnamastu voh manu, yethava susa hasti. United your resolve, united your hearts, may your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquer. Om shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om.
Amen. At this time, I'd like my friend in Ward Four to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this point, I'd like to open our meeting. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guns. Any discussion?
All in favor.
For the clerk, that's a six oh vote. If the clerk would read the revisions.
To our policy agenda, we're substituting item 4B ordinance pertaining to section 216 and 311 of the Code of Ordinances. To our consent agenda, we're adding 5G resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to execute funding for the city of Biloxi's consolidation plan and 2020 action plan for the CDBG program. We're adding item 5H resolution to approve funding in the amount of $9,380 to repair the fencing at the pickleball courts. We're adding to our routine agenda a docket in the amount of $17,562.16.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion...
Amended.
To approve the amended agenda, again, we have a motion by Mr. Lawrence and a second by Mr. Guns. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? For the clerk, that's a six oh vote. That brings us to the mayor's report.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. President, and I join you and welcome everybody to our meeting in 2021 January. Let me pass on what we were concerned with a few weeks ago was the declaration, emergency declamation, the declaration that would cover us for public assistance, and that has been signed. And our steps are to, we've incurred probably four or five million dollars' worth of expenses with debris and damages from Zeta. That process will begin, it will be the process of submitting our data to the FEMA portal and to be processed through MEMA and FEMA. And so that has begun, and along those lines, we all know how FEMA works with regard to pay the bill, get the check, send it off, get reimbursed. And so part of our plan all along was to have a cash flow mechanism, and I think that's in the works too, to have a credit line of up to 10 million to carry us through that cash flow period that we're going to certainly experience. Two things that we would be looking forward to, in addition to the normal Katrina claims, would be our COVID claims that will eventually come through FEMA and also this hurricane reimbursement. So it's good that we've, you know, we got that declaration so we can move on. I think we've got some folks here that have been counting the debris. I think we're up to 260,000 cubic yards of debris that has been removed. And again, all of it, the things that we've been tracking and reporting on will be submitted, and hopefully that cash flow and the reimbursement will come within a year or so, I'm sure. But again, we have gotten some competitive rates as far as, you know, the credit line. If we think our first bill will be about 1.5, Mike, I think that's right, 1.5 million to a crowd of golf. And so those things will start to flow, and we'll pay these vendors in a timely manner and then get reimbursed, hopefully, in a timely manner. And I think that's about, well, let me also say, I think this week, they've started the second pass. Expected it to be a second, but two or three weeks in this process to do the things that have, you know, gotten to the curve at this point. So that's moving along, and we're going to be, you know, submitting and tracking those costs. So hopefully, and, you know, again, there'll be ways to, if you miss the second pass, just will be available to either pull Pelican waste or some of our crews to do the things that were, you know, from a timing standpoint, we'll miss. So we'll, you know, I want to congratulate every, you know, our administration, Mike, and the whole group with regard to what has been done, and it's finally getting back to some semblance of before a storm or after a storm anyhow. That's clean. That pretty much concludes the report for my side, but I'm going to invite at this point in time the leader of United Way of South Mississippi, Kathy Springer, to come up and deliver us a little information on COVID, the pandemic, as well as Zeta. So it's over to you, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to address this council this evening about the work that Your United Way, United Way of South Mississippi completed and the ongoing work that we have continuing on due to the COVID pandemic and to Hurricane Zeta. But United Way of South Mississippi has responded and is still responding to two disasters within the last year, the COVID-19 pandemic and Hurricane Zeta. Your United Way has not stopped working since the onset in our communities. We have established our emergency fund, which is set up with the Gulf Coast Community Foundation, which we open during times like these. 100% of what was donated to that fund went right out into the communities we serve, which is Harrison, Hancock, Pearl River, and Stone Counties. Due to the generosity of many of our corporate partners and our individual donors, to date, Your United Way has put $358,000 into frontline community agencies for the rapid response to individuals and families affected by COVID-19 to address direct needs due to disruptions, loss of jobs, significant changes to services, and other consequences associated with the COVID. Many families have no support system, no safety net, and no Plan B. We have been more than pleased to collaborate with the Gulf Coast Community Foundation with many of our grants, and Your United Way and the foundation partnered to bring three mobile food pantries to Biloxi, Hancock County, and Wiggins, serving 1,100 families. When we collaborate with the foundation, our grants go even further. Immediately following Hurricanes at a, United Way of South Mississippi and the community foundation worked at the direction of Mr. Rupert Lacy and Matt Stratton at the Harrison County Emergency Management Agency, forming the Response and now the Long-Term Recovery Committee. Our staff, and they're here this evening, sitting behind me, along with two MEMA reservists working in our office, took over 1,700 work orders for volunteer assistance from individuals and families right here in our own community. Getting volunteers into our market has been a tough job this year with the pandemic and the competition, honestly, from the wildfires and the other storms in the area, there are just so many to go around. In 2020, in the city of Biloxi alone, United Way of South Mississippi funded St. Vincent De Paul Community Pharmacy, the Boys and Girls Clubs, Moore Community House, the Center for Nonviolence, Catholic Charities, Gulf Coast Mental Health, the Salvation Army, and the Back Bay Mission. Many of you are familiar with our signature programs such as Pre-K Forward, where we're serving 184-year-olds in pre-K, getting them ready to go to kindergarten next year. They will be reading when they leave our pre-K program. We offer Dolly Parton's Imagination Library in this market, which is free to families. We have over 1,200 children enrolled in the library. It's free to families. Your United Way picks up the bill at over $40,000 a year. We believe in reading and literacy for every child. This month, we honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Each January, we embark on a diaper drive. You would be surprised how many families cannot afford diapers. It's a great expense to families. We collected thousands of diapers last year. We expect that we'll do the same this year. They go right out to frontline agencies, and I'm sitting here thinking about Moore Community House because they are a recipient right in our backyard here in Biloxi of those diapers. It is like a sack of money when you give a family a bag of diapers. We just concluded the annual fill the bus program where we collected over 25,000 school supplies, many of which went right to the Biloxi Public School District, the Excel by Five program, and other school districts in the areas that we serve. We offer a prescription savings card and tax assistance to seniors through the IRS. I want to leave you with one story this evening, and this happens to us all the time. A family shows up. This is a real story, a mom, a dad, and two kids. They came down to the Gulf Coast for a job that didn't pan out. They had less than $40 living in the car, couldn't get back to Corinth, Mississippi, had nowhere to turn, but they know what United Way can do. Immediately, one of our staff members sprung into action, starts collecting money because we discovered the family hasn't eaten in two days. They run up to McDonald's to feed the five children and the single mother. While that's going on, another staff member runs upstairs in our building to Open Doors Homeless Coalition, where we collaborate with those services and get them a hotel room. Our friends at Catholic Charities show up at the hotel with food for that family for a month. So all of these, no money changed hands out of Your United Way, but those are the things that we can make happen. We managed to find the mother and the oldest daughter employment. The father got a temporary job for the weekend, and the youngest child enrolled in school. So those are just some of the things that we can do at United Way. I'm very, very proud that the city of Biloxi allows us to campaign in the city offices. The city employees do support Your United Way, and I hope that we're there if they ever need a helping hand. It's not a sin to ask for help, and so we're there to help. I appreciate the leadership through a most unusual year by this city, by my city. I appreciate that so much, and Your United Way is here to serve our citizenry. And that's just a little bit of what we accomplished in 2020, a most unusual year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, and we appreciate you and your staff and what you do. Thank you so much. Happy New Year. One more thing. So I'd ask you to spread the expenses on the Biloxi travel credit card to the minutes, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Springer, for the United Way update on the good work that you and your staff do for those who need your assistance in our community. Thank you. We don't have any departmental reports, I don't believe. That brings us to the council report. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to thank the administration. We had a request. I know there's a lot of debris in the city, but in one particular road on Wells Drive, there was two boats along with various debris piles. So the teams that are removing the debris, those residents on Bay Cove condominiums and Savannah Estates and North Haven subdivisions certainly recognized it, and there's a lot of gratitude for that. The other thing I just want to touch on this evening, last night I got a call from Coach George Seacool's daughter, and she informed me that Coach had passed away last night. Many of you know Coach. He was one of the winningest coaches, not only in Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College football, but in Juco College Football altogether. He walked in my dad's shop one summer, and I was working on the side, and Dad was working on the other side of the shop, and he looked at me and, you know, kind of like a coach would look at a player, and he looked at my dad and said, "We need him," and he walked in the office. He didn't come back. My dad walked back out, said, "You're going to play football for Coach." But those three words, "We need him," resonated a lot, and when his daughter called me, that's the first thing that came to mind, and you never know what effect somebody is going to have on someone's life. But Coach had that effect on a lot of Coast Boys, that he gave a chance to play a sport that we loved, but he taught us how to win off the field as well, and he did a lot of great things in the community, not just in his, you know, he won a national championship for Southern Miss. I don't know how many people know that, but he was a great athlete, a great man, and, you know, he's one of those Coast treasures.
I think it was two national championships at Park, wasn't it?
Two national championships at Park and many state championships, and, you know, he gave a lot of people an opportunity, and a lot of people have a lot to be thankful for, for Coach George Seacool. And I would hope you'd give me the privilege and honor of closing this meeting later on in his memory. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guns?
Yes. First, I want to thank Walt. Rode up and down Division Street. I like those lines. They're coming out pretty good. Just got to get the whiteness in, and we'll wrap that up. I encourage the council, talked to the mayor. A FEMA rep called me today, and he wanted to do a workshop, and of course, they can't travel, so he was asking, could we possibly look at the possibility of doing a workshop, a virtual workshop, where we can put it up on the board and bring the councils around to make sure we get all the benefits that we can get through FEMA. Last thing I have is debris pickup. I'm still a little, I need to, Mike, probably get with you about their routes because they're missing the mark on some areas, and I just want to make sure that they cover the areas that they're supposed to cover. I'm having calls from the same people over and over about them passing by, missing them, and of course, I ride the neighborhood pretty good, and I haven't seen them, so it behooves you to, at least, if we can get a schedule from them of where they're going and what roads, so we make sure they don't miss the mark.
Councilman, the best thing for you to do for me, it would help me to help you, is to give me the addresses that you're getting the calls from because, you know, they're not giving us a route, they're just saying we're working in the ward, and we find sometimes there are streets that they just miss, and for no apparent reason, they just, for some reason, miss certain streets. If you'd give me those, I think we can target them into those neighborhoods.
Okay. I'll give you a list at the end of the meeting, and that concludes my report.
We're going to get Shank Street, I promise you.
Thank you, Mr. Guns. Mr. Derning?
Mr. Leonard, I know Ms. Bell's not here. Do you know when we're going to, if we pass this resolution to increase the budget to repair the fences at the pickleball court, do you know what timeframe we're looking at?
The fences...
The pickleball court in Biloxi on Pops Ferry Road?
Well, now it's up to our parts and Rex's director, as well as Tom and Diane Dion, who are sitting back here behind me. They will be on the phone to the fence company tomorrow trying to get, it's now between us and the fence company to try and get them in before this next big event.
Will you just send me an update, let me know what timeframe we're looking at when we talk to them? Thank you. Second, chief, unfortunately, I left the card at my house. My daughter was into a small thunderbender. No one was hurt, just a little metal was twisted up, but the officer that came out, I think it was a Benton, Officer Benton, younger guy, he's been here for almost three years from Goche. He did a great job. The way he interacted with my daughter, who was crying and terrified, and the other party, it was a piece of art. And so I know Goche didn't train him that well, so thank you for doing a great job with him. Thank you. Mike, back to you. With the absence of Chris Lavata, and I guess you're going to be the interim over the engineering department as far as workflow goes?
That's correct. I reminded the mayor the day after she left that I had a master's degree in engineering administration, and I might be some help.
Well, answer's yes, he's going to be doing it.
Well, good, then you're temporarily the right guy for the job. I had a couple of projects that were set up to go into motion, but it's been postponed numerous times because of Zeta and some COVID issues and different things. Is there any way you can get me an update on when we'll potentially get the lane delineators on Pops Ferry Road and the sidewalk project for Sunkist Country Club Road?
If I write those down and call you tomorrow, can I do that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We talked about the delineators this week, this morning.
The delineators, we know, were ordered and received, so it's a matter of schedule the guys to put them in.
Okay.
And the other one was a sidewalk job?
Yeah, the contractor was postponed due to weather and, of course, the holidays. So they pushed it back into January. I was just going to see if you could give me a closer, nailed-down expectation of completion.
I will either call or text you tomorrow.
I'll give you a little bit of update on that contractor, you know, that has been on our normal contract, is working the point as far as the repair and laying concrete right now. So I'm thinking that they're going, as soon as they finish with that point cadet, we'll move over that way.
Okay, great.
I'll call you tomorrow or text you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Derning. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, to follow up with Kenny was talking about, 1959, George Seacool was quarterback for Southern, and they went undefeated. A lot of people don't know, Southern never went undefeated, but when he was a quarterback that year, and a heck of a team, 1959, you remember that?
No, I don't.
He was a huge chip.
I was a baby when my brother...
Just thought you'd like to hear that little information. You know, what happened with George is terrible, but, you know, we had a couple of other people. Eugene Elzy worked with the police department, I mean, the fire department, and we had Hank Rogers, who used to work for the city, also passed away from the COVID. So it's been pretty bad, it's spreading pretty bad, but the only thing good about it right now is the second strain is not as deadly as the first one, but you still get sick in that time, but it's just not quite as bad. Going back to the debris, I know there are a lot of them working, but there's a lot of bad streets. If they finish, when does their contract finish?
It's finished when we say it's finished.
All right, so, headline right now.
Probably about three weeks, and at that point, we'll be on our own with our own trucks, and hopefully, they'll have gotten the worst of the stuff. One of the unique things I've noticed in the first two days now since they've been back, the ratio of construction debris to vegetative debris has changed. In the beginning, they had 12 trucks, and only one truck was doing construction debris because most people had not got their fences and broken boards and anything else out to the street, so they were mostly doing vegetative. As of yesterday, I was looking at the percentage, and they were doing about 65% construction debris, 35% vegetative. So that tells you that we've gotten a lot of the lambs and the trees and the stuff out, and now we're still getting a lot of the stuff that's taken people to get to the street. The fence, you know, the fence contractors have been running behind schedule trying to replace everybody's fences, so people are starting to get debris out to the street now, and we're seeing more and more of that kind of debris.
Is Pelican Waste going to pick up the bags? They told everybody to bag everything, so is Pelican Waste going to do that or is the same bunch of them?
Bags up, and, you know, the normal Friday afternoon debris in Biloxi, they'll continue to do that, and we've even had some conversations about asking them, two or three weeks ago, and we missed some things that would not be on the Pelican Waste cycle.
Pelican will pick up the bagged leaves so long as they move them away from the other pile so they can see it's what it is, and it's not mixed together. They've done a pretty good job. I'm not sure they're getting everything. In some cases, there's a lot of bags.
Yeah, a lot of them set up now, there's a lot of bags out there by themselves, there's nothing else with them. So I knew this bunch wasn't picking up, I was just wondering if Pelican Waste was going to follow up and get that. And thank goodness they signed a thing where we got all this money coming in to help.
Well, we got to submit the, I mean, the whole process has been done.
We get the fly foot, that's a great thing. The Porter Avenue pier, is there any way we could just take that thing completely down and redo it a little higher?
Let me give you an update on that. You know, we're going to ask to do some things differently. We're not going to put it back the same way. We're actually, you know, comparing the cost of doing a 12-inch wood piling, treated piling, as opposed to some of the things that you see on the beach right now around the I-110. That's, you know, I think that's 18 by 18 concrete, but as of today, in talking with some of the concrete people, the cost is getting very close to one another. So there used to be a big difference between wood and concrete, so we're hopeful that that may give us some flexibility with MEMA and FEMA to do some mitigation and actually go forward with a better, you know, set of materials that we can go forward rebuilding. And I think we rebuilt that pier three times since Katrina.
And we have actually redone that thing three times, roughly about $600,000 each time, and it don't last any longer. It goes down right off the bat. So that's the mean, ain't we wasting? We need to do it and do it right and bring it up higher.
You know, our pitch is to let FEMA, you know, if they just give us the money, we'll build what we need if it costs us 15 or 20% more, but they wouldn't even let us do that. So it's actual cost, and, you know, they... And, you know, they, they have been pretty stringent on replacing what you had, not what you should put back. So that's our pitch and that's what we'll, we'll press forward to give us some, some reasonable, you know, ability to, to do something that will last and not rebuild every time we, we catch a storm. And the same thing with the underground wiring. We have an opportunity on, as the, the South contract rolls out, to do some underground wiring and that would mitigate, you know, every time something happens with the aerial stuff, poles are knocked over. So we will ask them to allow us to do that also. So we're chasing those rules and regs and see if we can be positioned better when the next storm hits us.
Another one, the fishing bridge, the electrical box went underwater.
Yep.
And we're doing anything to put our lights back on?
No, we haven't, we waiting on, waiting on materials or the actual parts to put that back up. And we will put that up higher than, than, I think it's about 10-foot up right now.
You talking about the fishing bridge?
Fishing bridge, yeah. The fire, I mean, the lighting service.
The project at the fishing bridge was complete literally just days before the storm. And the lights were on and everything was great, good to go. Then the storm came and we, and the electrical box went underwater, got water in it. So what we're doing right now is we're closing out the old contract, the contract that's complete. But we're going to issue a purchase order to the same contractor to keep the money separate so that it shows it's a true hurricane issue. And we will send a purchase order to them to be going and repair the, the, the electrical box and, and to raise, raise the box up high. We have a high probability of getting FEMA funding for, for those, for that piece. And so, and we'll do that, we'll do that, we won't, we will do that as one of our project worksheet, projects here very soon, actually. We, we won't have to wait. That's not a big ticket item. And we, we probably won't have to wait for reimbursement to get started on that one.
We've also had some conversation with regard to those services, those boxes on traffic signals. We had some conversations with the folks at MDOT. They may be raising that also. So if it was up five or 10 more feet, then the lights that went out, you know, in this, in Zeta, maybe we're not do that. So looking at every angle.
So councilman, just, just so I can give you the one, one over the world look at, what happens now is once FEMA opens the spigot to MEMA and once MEMA opens the spigot to us, that is, accepts our, our public assistance request, then we will begin to develop a series of project worksheet or projects that will be submitted for reimbursement, that will be submitted for reimbursement. There will be projects like the roof of the Vista Center or like all the damage to the MGM Park or the damage to the elevator at the Point Cadet Marina. There'll be probably 30 or 40 of these projects that we'll put together, estimate, put, do some engineering in some cases and submit those all to MEMA so that it could be approved as project, eligible projects. And at that point, we'll then be authorized to go do the work. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, do the work means also get out our checkbook and pay for it, hopefully with our line of credit and then submit for reimbursement. Reimbursement probably comes 60 to 90 days after we pay for the work. So that's, that's what you're going to see over the next six to nine months is this, and, and no city in the, in the country has done this more often than we have. So we know the drill.
I think, in looking at some of the emails, Clayton French from MEMA, it's going to, decided to be our coach on, on things that need to be in place as we roll. But the, the January 30th is a, is a deadline for us to, to move through the applications in, at, at the high level. And then, as Mike said, develop the detail that make up what we're going to be asking for reimbursement. So that process is in motion.
Yeah.
The last couple of things is I've talked to Chief of Police and I talked to Paul Robert. We'll have a resolution put on next week about the golf carts, where they can do it, which have to have to be a legal golf cart. I'll let y'all look at that, but not this, the third week, the third Tuesday. We'll have that on air and probably also the cemetery. You know, Paul, I mean, Peter's been worrying about that one forever. Anyway, we're trying to have both of them ready for the third, the second meeting in a month.
Let me give you an update on, on golf carts. There may be some things taking place through MML and the state legislature that would kind of put us in a, you know, a sort of position that wouldn't be all up to us on how we, we do things. So the state may be, the legislature may be doing some things that would kind of preempt what we would have to do.
Yeah, I would add to that, just expand a little bit. And, and MML's latest publication, that's one of the projects they're working on, is a golf cart ordinance statewide. So I don't, you know, the session's not going to be over till the end of March, first week in April. But apparently there's, you know, something moving forward and something bubbling up there, so.
But, but we still have, the city have to have our own rules and regulation and we have to set them up there and get it approved.
We don't.
Have a no vote.
Yeah. If we has to go to local property, there needs to be unanimous, which I.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
You sure?
Not while they wait a minute, one more.
Okay. Unlike Columbo, there's always one more. Ms. Newman?
Yes. Mike, I also sent you an email needing an update from Christie, sent you the new Christie on our Bay Vista area. So look up for an email on that.
I saw the Bay Vista and I got that email today. And I'm, just as I said to Ward Four, I will look at those tomorrow and send you an email.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
You're our eyes and ears out there.
I appreciate it. Also, the debris situation, not only that, litter has just, has been atrocious, especially around McDonald Avenue with the, the tracks and on Irish Hill, Terra Lane. I mean, it is just, it's phenomenal how terrible it is. So I'm asking that even perhaps city vehicles, if you're passing by and you see litter, help out because I know Public Works is trapped right now, but it's just atrocious.
No, it is between McDonald and, and Rodenburg and, you know, along the tracks.
Unbelievable.
And it, it happens and I congratulated Bill Ray and his crew for doing a pretty good job a couple of times already, but it happens over and over again.
But if others could pitch in, I mean, if you're riding by and you see some trash, I mean, what's to hurt to help out?
That's it.
With your beloved city. Thank you.
You called our attention to the Terra Lane area and Saturday, two weeks ago, I think it was two weeks ago Saturday, we had a crew from Public Works and several trucks that made a big sweep down through there. It looks like we'll have to do the same thing along the railroad tracks there and that, that, that property that, that you mentioned.
Anything else, Ms. Newman? All right, thank you. I have no report. That brings us to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll allocate up to 45 minutes total with three minutes allotted per speaker. When you're recognized, if you come up to the table here, sign in with your name and address and also state your name and address to be sure that the clerk has this down in the minutes. At this time, if there's anybody seated at the desk, we'll let him speak.
I'm sorry, I don't know the whole.
Oh, that's fine, Mr. Bowman, go ahead. You did, you did good, you did good.
Okay. I'm Harold Bowman, currently reside 268 Dewey Circle. I have a petition here strictly for you, Mr. Gines, petition signed for the residence of Dewey Circle. It reads as follows. Drivers come through this area like it's a racetrack with disregard for children, elderly that live, play and walk pets in the area. To reduce the risk of casualty, we request a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Dewey and State Street. We also ask to see the speed reduced from 25 to 15 with some, excuse me, children at place signs posted as well. Be all honest with you, when I was going around having this petition signed, they would, the residents were like, we would like all the intersections a four-way stop because they just fly through there like it's, like it's a racetrack. But of course, we've all agreed that this is the most dangerous intersection and, which is also a school bus stop as well. And that's all I have. So.
Yeah, they'll, they'll get that to the clerk. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Is there anybody else on my, on your right, my left? Anybody on my left, your right? Anybody on my right, your left, would like to address the council? Anybody in the back like to address the council? All right, thank you then. Citizens' comments are closed. That brings us to the policy agenda. And we have a couple of first readings, I believe, if the clerk would read item A.
Ordinance to approve a zoning map amendment for portions of five parcels of land for properties identified as a portion of three unaddressed parcels fronting Shriners Boulevard, Frank Hudson Road and Jim Bird Road.
I'll move it. Second. Yes, that's a motion by Mr. Glavine and a second by Mr. Lawrence. Is that correct, Mr. Lawrence? Did I get that right?
Yep.
Thank you. That's a first reading. We'll move to the next item, item B, which is also a first reading.
Ordinance amending section 216 and 311 of the Code of Ordnances.
I'll move it. Second. It's a motion by Mr. Glavine and a second by Mr. Lawrence. Because this is one of the, this item was substituted, just to be clear, because there was a little excitement out there on, on salaries and so forth. The salaries are proposed to remain the same. And this will be up for a second reading at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, so there really is no salary increase if approved. That brings us to several second readings, item C.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordnances specifically 13112 fireworks. And it was previously moved by Lawrence and Glavine.
I'd like to table this subject to call. Nathan said he'd like to be and talk to these people that heads of fireworks stands and that. So I just asked the council to just table it.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so you have a motion to table this item which deals with firework ordinances that, a motion by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Danning. Any discussion? All in favor to table? Thank you. That's a 6-0 vote for the clerk. That brings us to the next item, D, on the agenda.
Ordinance to amend section 613 to redesignate polling places. And that was previously moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Glavine.
This is the polling place out there. This is one in your ward, Felix Ward Two, the senior citizen is one of them. They're moving it there to the one in Bayview. And talked to Beverly today and she won't know the dates, so I gave her the dates, April 6th, the 27th, and June 8th. And she said, sure, everyone is closed the day before too, if you want to go there and set them up. But then they had to run off to another thing, so you, so you had the 5th and 6th, the 26th to 27th, and then June 7th and 8th. So anyway, that's, that's when you're working with the county, you know, she did that. I think Kenny talked to her too about all that.
Yep.
So it's a good thing, so that, that's pretty much what we're doing with that.
Mr. Glavine, any comments?
The only thing I want to follow up, Beverly also mentioned that she is creating through no expense from anybody, so she's got some federal dollars for a phone bank to be able to contact senior citizens and check on them and make sure that we're supporting them if there is a need. And I believe in the back, there's some, an area in this senior citizen facility that is available for that. She asked me just, she was going to be here today, but she had some things come up, so she just asked it. We, we mentioned that for council reference.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? That's a 6-0 vote for the clerk. That brings us to item F.
Ordinance amending chapter 13 pertaining to regulations regarding debtors administrative hearing, previously moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Glavine.
Mr. Lawrence?
Mr., the mayor, you want to explain to, what you're doing here with this? The collection, that Peter's got a, oh, we got to have legal advice? It's not costing us money you've been here, is it?
Saving money. This is, the legislature last year allowed for a mechanism in the statute to allow debts or accounts from the city to be collected through this intercept program. We did not, we did not get involved last year, wanted to see how it worked and what other cities did and what success they had. And it seems to be working pretty well. This would allow us, we would write a letter to someone that had a debt or a judgment and tell them they need to settle their debt or there will be 25% added on it, like a collection fee. The, if they don't pay and that's added on to the debt, then the collection agency takes that 25% and it can be offset against a state tax refund. So that's sort of the, the incentive for people to, to pay these past debts. We don't have anything really, any real plan to roll anything out immediately, but to get into this program, this is the, we needed to amend our ordinance to allow for a hearing for someone. If we send them that letter and they contest the debt, we want them to be able to have a proper hearing to make sure that they are the right person and that they, to verify that they do owe that debt. There's another resolution that we tabled last week that actually allows us to enter into the contract with the Municipal Intercept Company, which is sort of a branch of the MML, the Municipal League. And, and at present, they, they are the only company that is in this intercept program through the state. And the counties have similar, the county organization has a similar intercept program that many counties have joined in the last year. So we're just trying to bring this in to have a tool to collect some prior judgments or prior debts as they come due.
So we're on a consent agenda, dealing with the same thing, just a different way?
Right. Right now, you've already approved last year a collection company that has the same sort of process. They send a letter, if they collect, they can add 25%. This is actually, but if, if they don't succeed or if they're ignored, there's no real mechanism to proceed. This allows more of a, a tool that, that we would be able to apply to the state and the Department of Revenue would hold out part of that debt, part of that refund and refund that to the city.
So this would work with other code enforcement?
Well, it could. With code enforcement, we have the mechanism to, to put it on the tax rolls and they have to, when someone pays their taxes or it gets sold in a tax sale, we're paid off then. So code enforcement and those special assessments are not really an issue. It's an issue, we have some people at the port where we took judgments again, against and, and they've refused to pay. We've got a few, some old traffic debts that people are, may or may not be around. There's just, it's just a mechanism to allow collection to proceed or something like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Glavine, comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, so to put it in a little bit more simple terms, I think, so the ordinance just creates the, the ability to put this in place. And then the other resolution basically is just saying that we're going to hire a third party to assist with this, this new procedure that we're putting in place, correct?
That's right.
Okay. I don't have anything.
That's it. Any other comments, discussion, Mr. Danning?
I do. Peter, when I, when I read through the, the ordinance, one thing that jumps out at me is this is a debt owed to the city, correct? Who is going to be the arbiter of this hearing? And here it says, "The hearing officer shall meet the director of the legal department or any such other individual recommended by the mayor and approved by the city council for limited purpose of conducting the hearings." So a person that has vested interest in collecting this debt is therefore going to arbitrate the validity of the debt. I have a problem with that. The one thing that I think would overcome that is if we added an appeal provision here, and I didn't see that. How would somebody appeal the decision of this hearing officer of the city of Biloxi when they're challenging a debt to the city of Biloxi?
I think there is an appeal procedure in that as far as the cities we took this from. I think there was some sort of appeal. I don't have it all in front of me, but, but that's a, that's a valid.
I think there was some sort of appeal. I don't have it all in front of me, but that's a valid point. I think the primary role of this, of a debt officer would be, are you this person? You know, did you incur this debt to verify that? I just felt having someone from our department do that, we would be better served to know that it was a valid debt rather than just someone rubber stamping these things. Checking with other cities, I mean, I think the, from what I hear, most cities, they've sent out 15 or 20 of them. They probably had somebody show up once, but I think-
But my fear is that we will, if a city official is the arbiter of these debts, I feel like we will get a rubber stamp. I feel like it's in the best interest of them to adjudicate that debt as legitimate. And so I just would like to see some sort of process for which somebody could appeal, you know, a decision that was in their favor.
Let me ask Peter too, if you were to guess on percentages, would 70 to 80% of this come through traffic court and municipal court, those debts? Would that be low or high? Probably even higher than that, right?
That's probably most of it is going to be traffic court, where they already have a, we have a judge's finding of that, that it has been adjudicated. But I think we could add that sentence in if they're, if someone's dissatisfied. They'd have so many days to, I guess, either go to the council, probably not to go to the council, probably just to file something in county court.
Right. I would think it would be appropriate for the county court. Do you want to add that in there and then we'll vote on this next week or-
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Well, I have a motion to table this until Thursday, till the third Tuesday of this month?
In two weeks, yeah.
Two weeks, correct.
There's a motion to table by Mr. Demming for two weeks, which would be our next regularly scheduled meeting. That gives you enough time, Mr. Ray, by?
Sure.
Do we, E and F, right?
Let's see.
Probably the consent agenda too.
Let's see, but then we need, let's table, let's table the corresponding resolution for good.
That'd be item F, I think?
Consent, yeah, I think.
All right, so we're looking, you tell me what's the cleanest way to do this, Ms. Brazier?
Right now, we've got a motion waiting on a second to table-
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawrence?
I'll read it. I'll read it second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Demming to table and a second by Mr. Guines. And we have another related item under the consent agenda. How about we just address it at that time? Would that be better? Okay, we'll do it that way. Any other discussion on tabling item F? We'll call for the question. All in favor of table?
E. He is an easy.
Item A.
I'm sorry, it is A.
It is?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Nathan, get well soon.
I know, yeah, isn't that the truth? All right, this is, this is item A. So there's a motion to table item A, all in favor? It's a 6-0 vote for the clerk. Thank you.
And one thing I would add to what you just discussed is the background for why we're doing this. When I first looked, worked the budget four years ago, we were budgeting a million dollars a year in court fines. Since then, it's continued to drop and drop and drop, and
Collection.
collections are running below $400,000 for the year. So we're below half of what we were just four or five years ago, collecting money.
I just want to clarify, in no way we're trying to say that we're trying to create additional income. We're just trying to collect-
Collect what's due us.
Collect things appropriately.
Collect what's due.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to-
I'll read it. I'll second.
To approve it, there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. We'll start with Ms. Newman, if there are any exceptions.
None, none. Mr. Lawrence?
Now, what, this, A, is this about the Bottomlands Water? Is this with the Secretary of State, the thing with Long Beach?
It's just a ruling, it's the ruling that the judge gave in the Long Beach case.
So how does that affect us, like in Biloxi with the Bottomland Water and everything around? How is it going to help us in the long run, right?
It's a pending, it's a pending decision from our chancellor saying what poor commissions have the power and what cities and counties, what powers they do have. You know, we don't really have any reported decisions on that. And it's subject to appeal, but I think it's a very, it's a very-
Good position to be in.
Helpful opinion. It says, "What we felt all along is we don't need permission to repair our piers, or we don't need a Toddland's lease to go out and do work in our own harbors." And so it's something I felt like it's appropriate to spread that on our minutes just in case it tries to get undone or untaken away through some future settlement, something like that. So it's a, it's a good decision for our ports and harbors. It gives the cities the power through the statutes that they've always had.
Anytime it's a plus for the city, you know, you got to go with that. It's a good thing for us.
Yes, sir.
Any other items, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we'd already covered F. Are you going to table F too?
Yep.
Right, we'll-
Did that already?
We'll table F in just a moment.
All right.
We'll get to that.
That's everything then.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Demming?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Mr. Guines?
None.
Any items? Mr. Glavine, any items?
Everything's been duly covered. Thank you.
Duly covered, thank you. That being the case, I'll encourage a motion to table item F. This is the associated resolution.
So I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Demming and a second by Mr. Lawrence to table item F under the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a 6-0 vote for the clerk. And now, there being no further discussion on the consent agenda items, we'll deal with the rest of this agenda. All in favor? All opposed? That's a 6-0 vote. There are no exceptions other than tabling that one item. All right, that brings us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel?
Item A on the agenda, Roy E. and Emily A. Gilmore Estate, 330 Penny Avenue. This property's still in violation.
Is anybody here speaking that wishes to speak on behalf of 330 Penny Avenue? All right, this hearing is closed. Brings us to the next item, the next hearing. Mr. Creel?
Item B, Wilbert and Elizabeth Holland, 386 Lee Street. The, both of these, B and C, are lots side by side. They just have a different parcel number, if you'll notice, but item B is still in violation.
All right, is anybody here to speak on that parcel designated? One of the two parcels, 386 Lee Street, or the second parcel, Wilbert and Elizabeth Holland? Anybody just here to speak on this matter? There being none, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Come on.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence is there, second.
Walt here to give us an update. There he is, he's back there.
Did I, did I hear Felix?
I talked to the mic so that people can hear you. Please.
My voice is too deep for you.
Mr. Guines, excuse me, Mr. Guines, seconded that.
So we have not received the money yet, the 1.465 million from MEMA, but we should have it this week. Counting's aware to look for it and notify us. We'd like to say MEMA worked very well with us just before the Christmas holidays. We got in touch with the MEMA Public Assistance Director, Mike Siler, and asked if he would push that through for us so that we would not be waiting till after the first of New Year. And it's because of the efforts of MEMA under Greg Maschell, Clayton French, and Mike Siler that the money should be coming this week to us.
Appreciate the update.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the routine agenda? Call for the question. All in favor? That's presented. That's a 6-0 vote for the clerk. Say our motion to recess.
I'd like to motion that we recess in memory of Coach George Seacool.
You want to do that? I mean, I would all second that. Hank Rogers, Eugene Elzy, that's them. Both of those spent a lot of time with City of Biloxi. I think you should do them all. That'd be good.
So who else, George? You said-
Hank Rogers.
Uh-huh.
And Eugene Elzy.
All right. So we're recessing in memory of Coach George Seacool, Hank Rogers, and Eugene Elzy. All in favor? That was seconded by Mr. Guines, the silent man. That was, that was a 6-0 vote. We stand in recess. Our next meeting is the 19th of January. Thank you.